All right, we'll call the August Board of Education to order with the salute of the flag.
At the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott Latham?
Here.
Thomas Kenner? Thomas Grattan?
Here.
Dawn Hangerman?
Here.
Christian Pryor?
Here.
In the event of an emergency, all visitors are advised that they may exit this room from the one side door which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building. Do not attempt to leave in your automobile since this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles.
As we have no visitors, we will skip to the consent agenda, which consists of minutes, financial matters, CSC and PCSC recommendations. Yeah, there's none.
Yeah.
Just first, let's recognize a donation in the amount of $10,000 from the H.W. Wilson Foundation awarded to the Robotics Club. I guess I need a motion to accept that.
Accept everything you can do.
Who is the H.W. Wilson Foundation or what is the H.W. Wilson Foundation?
I'm not really sure. I think it was a grant that Judy might have applied for.
It was a grant that Judy applied for.
Oh, okay. I guess we should send them a thank you or something. All right, can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Old business, I have none.
Do you have any old business?
Nope. Superintendent's report.
So it's been great having everybody back in yesterday and today. I say this to them every time that we start, that schools really were not meant to be quiet. And for a week, it's nice not having anybody here. And then after that, it's kind of boring and a little bit lousy. And so it's great to have everybody back. Our teachers are working hard. We've done some really nice training. We worked with Judy today. You guys will see the results of that with the goals that we're going to ask you to adopt tonight. And you'll also see that in the presentation that I'm going to do right now about the goals from last year. So welcome back. The buildings look great. And it's really nice to see the smiling faces and everybody catching up with each other and enjoying the learning that we do together. So our goals for last year. So, you know, just, I'm not going to read the mission statement. You guys can read it on our website, a portrait of our graduate, which we did a lot of work on over a two-year period. It's interesting to me how a portrait of a graduate has become a huge thing in New York State now. We finished ours a couple of years ago, and they want us to now reexamine it. So it'll be interesting to see where it goes. But I did notice on theirs, there's a lot of commonalities to ours, which is nice because I think they're well-intentioned. So these were our goals for last year. Seventy-five percent of all lessons observed will utilize high-quality instruction focused on student engagement and student ownership of learning as measured by class visitations. We did our visitations, just so that you know, in teams of two. So we scheduled up who was with who. I might be with Terrence this month, and we would take our X number of days, and we would do, you know, eight to 10-minute visitations in rooms. And we would chart our data as we went through. They were shared by both Terrence and Ellen last year with their faculties all throughout the year. They got to have good conversations with them. Our faculty has done fantastic work with the foundational five that we adopted as our kind of instructional model. And I'll say this, the same as I said yesterday and this morning, and the same as Judy said today, this is not new, and it's not stuff that our people haven't been doing. Our teachers were good before we started doing this. What it does is it creates a common language and a common expectation for our kids in kindergarten and in 12th grade physics class. They all know what a learning target is. They all know that they're going to have a learning target, and they're going to need to understand it, and they're going to need to, you know, attain it throughout the lesson. And we have good conversations about what is student engagement and what are strategies to engage students if they're not. And so it gives us a good, common language to promote instruction in our district. It doesn't really change tremendously what our people do. It just allows us to communicate K to 12 better than we ever used to, and we're seeing some nice progress. The second one was an SEL goal, Rethink Ed. Anybody who's a parent here has gotten the letters from me that tells you what our focus areas are, you know. So that was our second goal. The third goal was our financial goal, tax budget, percentage of passing, explore potential fiscal planning opportunities to support the district needs locally. And then the last one was our facilities goal. So we'll go one by one. Academic goal, number one. We had 238 class visits throughout the year in pairs. So that means about almost 500 times people walked into classrooms just for this, not counting observations. Our regular observation and our APPR observation is a totally different process, and we didn't mirror the two. This is a nonjudgmental learning process that we utilize with our teachers, and we don't link to individual teachers when it comes to this. We do it holistically as a district so that we can all become better instructurally and learn and grow as a district. So out of 238 classes visited, 89.4% of the classes were observed with engaging instruction. So the engagement strategies that we talk about, you know, turn and talk and pay or share, whatever it may be, they were evidenced in classrooms. Also noteworthy was 85% of the classes observed incorporated learning targets. Learning targets was our focus for last year. And anybody who's been in education for more than five years knows, we come up with these great things, we pour a ton into them, and then we chuck them, and we go on to the next great thing. And it's one of the biggest issues in education in this country. I spoke with, well, I didn't speak with this week, but I heard one of the commissioners of education of Norway or Sweden, one of the highest performing countries, and he said all of our instructional models come from the United States. We just implement them more thoroughly than you guys do. We don't switch them that much. He said, "You guys have great ideas. You come up with great ideas, but you're always coming up with new great ideas." So it was really nice to see that something that we weren't really looking for, that we didn't train on and didn't impress on, but we did the year before, and we talked about how important it was, and we did a lot of work on it, was still very present in the classroom. So this was nice to see. Our faculty staff did a wonderful job. Our second goal, utilizing Rethink Ed. We did two areas per month instead of one. Evidence was visible materials and common language observed in classrooms across the district. You saw it noted in observations regularly. We had PE teachers and health teachers and classroom teachers talking to kids about the topics that we were focusing on, and it was very visibly clear. We did have a decrease in behavioral referrals. We quantify, we don't really break, we broke apart our referrals a little bit last year. We're going to look to do it better this year, but, you know, a referral for being late and a referral for, you know, for discipline are two completely different things. So we had to quantify it that way. We had very positive anecdotal feedback from teachers, things like it's easy to implement, the materials are nice. The materials have come out of Yale University, and they're very well researched and organized. And then we did a survey at the end of the year, and 87% of our teachers, when asked, "Is this something that you would like to keep in place?", they said they would. A lot of the comments on that were, "The materials are really easy to use. It's nice that it's common from class to class." Our teachers were very candid in saying, you know, "Some of this stuff I just do. It's natural. You know, I don't necessarily need it, but it's nice to have universally." So when asked, "Would you like this back for next year?", 87% of them said they would. So, you know, we believe that Goal Two was obtained along with Goal One. Goal number three is our financial goal. Seventy-five percent or greater voting yes for the budget, an AA two-plus rating, and then explore all potential fiscal planning opportunities. So we exceeded the goal of 75%. We had 85% vote yes for the budget. Our rating was AA two-plus, correct Chuck? Yep. And then when it came to Goal Three A, explore potential, we really were not fully successful with that. We looked into some different areas, but we have some work to do with that. And really, what that talks about is the fact that in seven years, our bond falls off.
Yeah.
We don't have a major project that we need to bond 20 or 30 million dollars out for, and, but, that money is money that we want to use to upkeep our buildings on a regular basis. So really, what we're looking for is how do we not spend that every year and put it into like a savings account? So when you need $2 million worth of work, you can build up $2 million, do the work, and not charge the taxpayers additional monies for it because it's already in your budget. That's what we're looking to do. We did not find a mechanism for that, but you'll see it again on this year's goals because we're going to look to it. And then the last one was our facilities goal. Facilities Department continues to ensure the five-year plan as an effective guiding plan. All of our boilers were installed in there, all operational. You guys saw them tonight. You know, windows, lights, air conditioning. We had a lot of work done in areas that were big areas. You don't really see them unless they're a problem, you know. When they're a problem, you see them. You guys saw the lights that were being replaced, and pretty much all of them will be. We had our windows repaired, and, you know, to Anthony's credit, rather than replacing 12-year-old windows that really didn't need to be replaced, he found a company that could repair them and make them work correctly because they were not functional the way they were. First, it was this building that didn't open correctly, and for 10% of what would have cost to replace our windows, he found somebody that could come in and get them realigned and stabilized, and now they all open correctly, and we didn't have to replace them. In the middle school wing, they'd close correctly, and they had gaps, and they were never put in right, and they were substandard, and the frames had shifted. And he found a company that could come in for, you know, pennies on the dollar of replacing them and redo all the frames and solidify them all, and now they work. There's no gaps, there's no holes in them. They work correctly. It was all done outside of our school day. We didn't have to displace anybody. So a lot of that type of work was done, you know. So, you know, the five-year plan is a living document. It continues to be updated as things happen, and that is certainly a goal we achieve. I just probably turned this off. Questions? Yeah. I'm going to share with you next year, these are the goals that we worked on a little bit today. And, you know, our first one is an academic goal. This year, our focus is questioning. Eric, I can't get a, this is the one I sent you like half an hour ago.
Getting it to the teacher right before the wire.
I'm going to let you scroll up because clearly I can't read. So our first goal, our first goal is an academic goal. Our focus, another one of the foundational five areas is questioning. You know, so we want to incorporate, at 75% of our lessons observed, we want to incorporate high-quality questions to promote critical thinking, engagement, and student ownership of learning. This will be measured by class visits throughout the '25, '26 school year. The class visit tab on there, we're not going to go to it, but if you were to click on that, you'll see the beginning of the class visit instrument that we will use when we go through. We started working on that with Judy today. We have not finalized it, but we'll have that in place. We won't start this, we don't start this till the end of September. We want teachers to get it, get settled, and, you know, before we start coming through. But the focus this year is high-quality questions. You know, we'll look at some groups of that also, like higher-order thinking questions and things like that. But the goal is centered around questioning and high-quality questioning. Our second one is social-emotional learning. You'll see that it's very similar to different distances. We're going to explore tools to measure the success of the implementation. So it's nice that we have less behavioral referrals, but we'd really like to come up with something more concrete to say, "This curriculum is working for our kids. It's helping them make better choices. It's helping them live better lives. It's helping them navigate the difficulties that you come up with, with stress and anxiety and school and all these different things." So that is more of a focus this year. Goal number three is the financial one. We want to pass our budget 75%, keep that rating, and then you'll see Three A. Explore all potential fiscal planning opportunities once our bond debt is paid. It's a lot more concrete than the last one. I'm told by a lot of people that are business people forever that you can't do it. We're not designed that way. We're not, we're designed as a pay-as-you-go system, which is one of our major problems. And that's why you see places that are bonding out for a million dollars because they need to build a building, and then they pay for the next 30 years on it, and then that debt drops off. And it's just, it's not a great system, you know. We don't even get reimbursed. Our reimbursements are not even aligned with our payments. So you start paying, and then like three years later, you start getting your, you know, your reimbursements, your aid back on what you paid. And so your aid might go for years after your bond does, or it might end before your bond does. It's just a, we have a lot, we don't have a great fiscal system in New York State. So what you would do if it was your home or your business is, if you needed a new roof, you'd put away a couple hundred thousand dollars to pay for the new roof on your business, you know, or whatever it may cost, $10,000, $10,000, $5,000, or whatever it may be. And that is kind of what we're looking to try to do, is create a system where we can pay as we go. We do that with reserves a lot, and we would like to do it, you know. And the truth is, it's seven, eight years from now, so it's quite a while from now, and I probably won't even see it. But it would still be really prudent if we can figure out a way to do this so that the South Hill community doesn't need to bond and jump 75, 700. You know, our bond debt is $750,000. So if we bonded and our bond debt was a million that we were going to pay, then that needs $250,000 added to your budget, you know. So you don't really want to go up and down like that. You've got to be steady. So that is the goal. And then facilities plan, we can just, I don't even know what that is. Fiscal, you know, what we want to do is develop a document that coexists with our five-year plan so that we can really monitor everything that gets done. You know, a lot of what we've done since COVID has been, this needs to get done. We're running on one boiler. We need to fix it. The roof is leaking. We need to fix it. So we want to get to a point where not only are we doing the need stuff, we're doing, you know, we want to get ahead of it so that it doesn't even become a need. Because when your roof leaks, not only do you have to fix your roof, you have to fix everything that the leaking water damaged inside your building, you know. So ideally, we want to come up with a document that coexists with the five-year plan and helps guide our decision-making regarding this work so that we know, okay, you know, the roof on the middle school, we've talked about it, you know, it doesn't leak, and it's not a problem, but it's 20-something years old. It needs to be replaced. Let's replace it before it breaks, you know. That should be in that document as a priority. Am I talking about the right roof?
Oh, yeah. The middle school roofs are the oldest ones we have. But because it's pitched, we are fortunate. I mean, we do have some issues with it that we have to, it needs to be replaced.
Yep.
We talked about it for this summer. It's passed, but with summer school, we had to, you know, we couldn't do it with...
We did the windows, and we did a number of other things this summer, but that roof is probably the next job that's not, you know.
Maybe with Three A and Four. Because I know when we did the fields and whatnot, that was because we took the bond out because of the, we were paying a million dollars in debt service, whatever. It was already budgeted for.
Yep.
So we took the money, we took another bond out for half of that, and maybe we can identify a target in a five-year plan, seven-year plan, where we take out another bond to electrify the bus fleet or build a, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a, you know, I prefer to own stuff and not be in debt. But if it's already there and it's...
Yes.
And it's a worthwhile program, I wouldn't just say, "All right, we're not going to do it."
And that could be, like, when we say explore all financial, fiscal planning opportunities, we don't want that three-quarters of a million dollars to fall off because then it's never coming back unless you overtax your commitment.
Yeah.
And pierce your cap. That's the only time it's ever coming back. So, you know, it could possibly be another bond is what that fiscal planning opportunity is. It could be...
And target the, you know, target the amount of the bond to the debt service we already pay.
It could be that we have a reserve that, you know, it could be that we have a reserve that allows us to put in that. It's about 750 a year is our debt, is our bond debt annually, you know, give or take, right? So, you know...
But if we can identify something that's going to, all right, it's going to fall apart in 12 years, but the bond comes off in seven, all right, we'll do it five years early.
Yeah.
Whatever.
So that absolutely could be part of that plan. Any other questions about the goals? I think it's later on that they were...
Discussion adopting, yeah.
Right now?
Uh, no, it's further on in the agenda. Yeah. Number 10. He can go whenever he wants because I didn't have him in here.
Thank you.
The board has seen a little bit of this already because we did a walkthrough. The community has not.
Hopefully I do this right when it comes, let me see. Okay. So we did a little walkthrough of the two buildings, but, you know, and personally, I think they look good. I think the guys and girls, ladies did a great job. You know, they take pride in their work, and I think it shows when you look at the end product. But it just doesn't happen overnight. And this summer, right, we, I looked today, it's, we had something like 42 workdays to get all the work that we've done, done, which is, you know, considerably less than in the past. So just a little process of how we get to where we are. You know, we empty all the classrooms and offices. Everything usually comes out into the hallways. And as you can see, this is in the high school, and that's, you know, it's not pretty. But once the rooms are empty, then we can go in there and we can strip the floors, strip the wax that's on the floor, and then prepare. That's, that's one of the machines that's stripping. And then we can go in there and wax the floor. And you can see the new wax over on the right, how they, you know, the difference between the stripped and the new wax. But we also take the time when the rooms are empty. We go through and replace all the HVAC filters, whether it's on a window air conditioner or on the left-hand side, that's a Univent that all the classrooms have and some offices. And there's filters in there that have to get changed. Now, we don't just do this in the summertime. We also do it over break. We try to do them two to three times a year. But the summertime is when we just do like thorough cleanings of the rooms. You know, we, you know, we are able to get into those bookcases like that. We're able to, you know, dust above the light fixtures. We're able to just go through and, you know, just do a deep clean in all the classrooms. And this is when we also, not only do we change the filters on the inside of the air conditioning units, but all our roof exhaust and roof units, they all have belts and filters and pumps and motors, and that's where we go. We make sure we get those things all tuned up and ready for the school year. This year, what we saw earlier in the elementary school, we actually bought 450 lights to replace all the LED lights in the classrooms and in the hallways. We will need to buy more to do some of the other areas that we, I showed you in the lobby and the cafeteria. They had a little different type of fixtures. But we bought all those LED fixtures that you can see Drew swapping out right now. Drew and Bill, actually. And then in the high school, we, this will be our next, we'll bring, we'll, we have a lot of LEDs in the high school, but we'll, we'll come here next and start swapping out some of these that you see here that are LEDs. But we, you know, during the year, we have to go through and replace ceiling tiles and light bulbs and, you know, just do a, like I said, we, when we attack a room, we attack it from the ceiling down to the, down to the floor. So we always try to do painting. This year, we were able to get a lot of painting done. Part of that is because of the, all the hallways, you see that plank flooring? That, that doesn't require stripping and waxing. So the labor that we save on that, we were able to have the staff, you know, in other areas. We were able to power wash the front steps this year and power wash other, you know, the whole facade of the middle school and... So anyway, we did a lot of painting, did all the trim, did all, you know, walls. We may not have, we did a lot of touch-ups, may not have painted the whole wall from the one end to the other, but any area that had some marks, we took care of. We redid the steps. That's what I was trying to show you on the picture on the right. Didn't really come out that well. But repainted the steps with the yellow, you know, the yellow line so you can watch your step going down. This was in the elementary. We sanded the stage. It was all black, but it had, it was just, I don't know when the last time it was done, but we sanded it and we painted it black again because that's the color that stage should be. But we were able, you know, this is, that's super time-consuming, and we wouldn't have had that opportunity if we hadn't start changing the flooring out and some of these other, like the LED lights, right? That's going to be a lot less labor for us, too. There's no light bulbs to change. They're going to, you know, they're going to last for 10 years, 15 years, whatever it is.
LED lights were also part of the, who was the, the rebate program?
PSCNG.
PSCNG gave us like a 75% rebate on purchase cost of the LED lights. So as long as you do it in a set amount of time, I can't remember how much, it's probably three or four months.
Well, it's the program. The program is ending in December. So all the lights that we have, and we're, like I think I was telling you earlier, we're in no jeopardy of not meeting that deadline. We'll get all those lights in. And if we can, we'll start buying some lights here if I can get them in in time for the, I mean, I'm going to get them anyway. It'd be nice to get them, get the rebate on it. You know, it's free money.
But if you replace about almost 75% of all of them, not to mention the fact that they would use the price of those, they're, they use less energy, and they last significantly longer, and they have a lot lower maintenance level than the regular lights.
And they look, they're brighter, they're, it's just a better fixture.
You can put in the rebates as you go. I think Anthony put in the first. We bought 59, $5,970 worth of lights, and we got back a $4,000 rebate. So it cost us $1,970 to replace $6,000 worth of lights. And the $1,900 that we spent over the period, a little life of a light, we'll get that back many times over because it uses a lot less energy and lasts a lot longer than the old lights, you know. So Anthony had found the rebate again last year, asked me about it, and ended up, you know, you got to upfront it, which is an issue for some places, but really, you know, in a $36 million budget, buying, you know, $20,000 or $30,000 worth of lights, as long as you know you can get it done and get your rebate, it's well worth it.
So that's just something else that we were able to do this year. And Eric, Eric does the high school stage every year. That's his baby. He makes sure that that thing is pristine. So here's the shoe. The, we had a lot of repairs that needed to be done on the shoe, and we did a quick walkthrough before. And you can see some of the sizes of these holes that are, that were on there. I think, I think we did a great job repairing it, matching the colors and all that. It looks, it looks, in some, in some spots, it's even stronger than when it was originally built, based on how we had to repair it. And which, again, this is a time-consuming project.
And the inside was thoroughly cleaned and painted also.
Oh, yeah. The inside is... Shoe. Yeah. What's that? Drew Avret, senior, and Bill Metz. Junior helped, too, but, you know, Drew Senior's kind of like an artist. He's got, he's got the touch. Yeah. We brought him in out of retirement. Yeah. Absolutely.
We have a wonderful crew. We really do. If you need something painted, we have a guy that is the best painter that we've had in years. Does a phenomenal job, steady hand, knows what he's doing, did it for years. Something artistic, you get Drew. If something breaks, you call Bill Metz over, and he'll figure it out, you know. So like, we're very lucky that we have a crew that really, you know, they balance each other well, and they, and they work extremely well together, so...
And they care about the building. You know, they all, they, they're very prideful of their work, and they, yeah, they go above and beyond.
They make suggestions about things that we can do to make the buildings look better, knowing that they're going to have to do the work, and they'll still make suggestions to do it. So we are extremely lucky to have them because we wouldn't, our facilities wouldn't look, last, and function the way they do if we had a different group.
So just, you know, it was shown inside and outside of the building, but the grounds crew does an excellent job that, you know, we do some hedge trimming. This is the, we have to pull all the weeds out of the playground, and that was the, and then we put new fiber in, and that was what was delivered today. So that was what the leftover remnants in the parking lot over there, and we'll get that all straightened out tomorrow before school. But the grounds crew, you know, we, they power wash the buildings, they power wash the walkways, they, you know, we work on machines. I mean, they're, they do a lot of work in the summertime, get everything ready for the school, the fields, irrigations, you know. fields, irrigations, you know, I mean, it's just, the amount of work that two guys do, it's uh, it's pretty good. It's pretty amazing. And this year, we were actually fortunate. We had uh, three high school kids work with us. Um, uh, and we put them out with the grounds crew just to help lighten their load a little bit. And they did a great job and they loved it. They loved the work.
They worked through accounting program.
One of them did, yeah.
Mostly through, well, partially through accounting program. So county paid for them to come and work.
Yeah.
And then we we supported them all.
Was it Southold kids?
Yeah.
All of our students.
Yep. Um, and you know, one of our other responsibilities is to make sure that we deliver and install all the purchases that the staff and make over the summertime. Um, because we take in so many packages, we use the cafeteria as a staging area. So, and it gets piled in by classroom number where it's gotta go, you know? So when that room gets done, then the guys uh will deliver it to the classroom. And there's Bill just building this thing called Big Bubba. It's a portable back uh, backstop for for athletics. So this thing here, I should have took a picture of that going down the road because um, did anybody see it? It was pretty funny. We had to uh, we had to rig it up to the back of the pickup um, because it's so wide, but we couldn't.
It's like building a plane in your basement.
What's that?
You built it where you couldn't get out?
Yeah. Well, we, and we didn't wanna build it in, you know, out in the field because there's so many parts that next thing you know, you're gonna be looking through gra, you know, something gets lost. So we, we put it together in the parking lot and then uh, that thing took the the whole width of both, you know, both lanes, trying to get it down into the uh, into the field. Um, is that it? I guess that's it.
Questions for Anthony?
Yeah, if you have any questions, let me know.
Honestly, the school looks great.
Yeah, it looks good.
Thank you.
Most of the work that the the public's never gonna notice, but they see painted, fresh paint on the door jams. All right, you know?
Actually, you know what people notice a lot when they come in is the uh, the tile, the epoxy on the tile?
Yeah.
The epoxy coating. That's uh, that's that's like an eye-grabber because most old schools is that old, ours was like a mustard yellow.
Yeah, mustard yellow.
I tried to do it in Greenport. It just didn't go over that well. Maybe now. I I know the new, the people now are interested in it. Yeah, so it may go over.
Thank you, Anthony.
All right, personnel. Um, Nadine is retiring again.
No, just one.
First time.
Retired once. Okay. Uh, so employees leaving the district full-time, permanent, do I have to read them all or?
If you want to.
No.
You don't have to.
All right. Um, so we have employees leaving the district, full-time, leaving, part-time, entering full-time. Courtney Quinn, an ENL teacher, four-year probationary appointment effective August twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty-five through August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-nine. Employees entering the district, part-time, temporary substitutes, custodial substitutes, CPI training and planning, high school advisors, coaching appointments, and mentor pairs. Could I get a motion to adopt those?
Someone.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the district-wide safety plan, which is on the.
It's on the website. Um, the district, district-wide safety plans are required to be adopted by um, the end of the summer. Um, so we have to make changes to ours, statutory changes that came up, but you don't have to make them till three or four months into the school year. It's like uh, remember, October, November?
Yeah, like November. Just, they just came out last.
They just came out. And um, so for us to have had a meeting over the summer and then meet again to change them again made no sense. So really what we did is adopted last year's plan, and then in September, the safety committee will come together, look at the new guidelines, and do one plan for the year instead of doing uh, doing and redoing the plan for the year. But to comply, we have to have an adopted plan on our website by the end of this month. So that's why you see it here without having met if you're on the safety committee. Uh, that's the rationale for it. Um, you guys will adopt the same plan that we had. We just changed the dates on it. And then in September, we will meet and we will do the statutory updates that we're required to do.
So can I get a motion on that, please?
So both.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, I think the goals were fantastic and I think, can I get a motion to adopt them for this year?
Someone.
Second? Any discussion? I think we had a pretty thorough discussion. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, finance committee.
Nothing unless Chuck has something he wants to tell us.
The uh, the auditor's coming in next week.
Uh, building committee.
Buildings look awesome. You did a great job.
Anthony, you'll give us a report after you guys do your walkthrough and punch list on the boilers.
I have a walkthrough next week with the architect engineer and contractor for the boilers. Just go with punch list. Uh, yeah.
Make sure nothing was missed. Make sure everything was done correctly, all that, you know?
I'm pleased that the guys know how how truly happy we are every year and how, what a great job that they do. Um, policy committee, we have nothing.
We will have to meet that.
Yes.
Couple of updates.
Um, new business. Second hearing of, or should I do this in the business?
Don't do that.
All right. Um, this is from the, it's a thank you. Tony and the Southold Board of Ed, the Greenport Board of Education, our staff and our students are deeply grateful to the Southold Board. Tony and staff are generously opening your school to us for our summer program. Your support ensured that our students had a safe, welcoming place to learn, and it reflects the spirit of partnership between districts. Thank you for making this possible. With appreciation, Beth Doyle and the Greenport Board of Education. So.
Just to to let you know that um, any Southold student, and we had a number of them that attended uh for classes, they waived all of their tuition. Um, so any Southold student who, whether they were a student that was mandated that we would have normally paid for, or whether they were a student that just went and would have paid for themselves, if they were a Southold student and they signed up and there were, um, I can't tell you the exact number because I can't, it doesn't register right now, but there was thousands of dollars worth of fees that they waived for our kids, which really, uh, you know, again, it shows the, you know, the cohesive uh work that we do together um to make sure that the kids on the North Fork get what they need educationally.
Well, that's what what she says here. And it reflects the spirit of partnership between districts. Um, we've worked long and hard to uh create that partnership, and I hope it continues. Um, second hearing of visitors, we have none. So board member commentary. Tom?
Oh, I just, the building is awesome and good luck to everybody. It's only a few days away.
Christian?
Uh, yeah, school looks great. Uh, my kids are actually excited to to start up again. So um, just thanks to all the staff and teachers because you make it a great environment and uh, my kids are excited.
Good luck. Good luck with your school year. I dread it and look forward to it at the same time. And I think we all do. Um, I love that the elementary opens for the kids to come in and bring their school supplies. Um, and it's like sitting on the calendar and my son keeps looking at it like, no, mom, we gotta go. Okay.
They hear their voices in the hall.
So, good luck.
Um, yeah, I just reiterate them, it's gonna be another great school year. Thanks to you guys and thanks to you, everybody you guys supervise and and lead and coach and nurture and mentor. Um, you guys are the are the ones that are making this place the special place that it is. So uh, I applaud you and I hope we have another great school year, which I'm sure we're going to have.
Just before you end, I wanna thank our administrative, our entire administrative team is here tonight. Um, they worked on our goals today. They wanted to be here for the adoption of them because they are a large part of what we do during the year. So thank you guys for taking uh time away from your schedules to come out and be here.
Uh, motion for adjournment. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, cool.